Okay, good evening. This is the City of Oregon City Planning Commission meeting of Monday, February 26, 2024, in the Commission Chambers of Lipkey Public Safety Building, 1234 Lynn Avenue. And can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner LaSalle.
Here.
Commissioner Dole.
Here.
Commissioner Schlegenhoffer.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Laws.
Here.
Vice Chair Espy.
Here.
Chair Stoll, excused absence.
Okay, and at this point on the agenda, we have a public comment where citizens are allowed to speak up to three minutes, presenting information relevant to the Planning Commission hearing tonight. Are there any speaker slips? I get a shake of the head, so we'll move on. Meeting minutes approval, minutes approval for February 12, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve, or are there any comments?
A motion to approve the minutes of February 12, 2024.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, motion was made by Bob LaSalle and seconded by Daphne West.
Commissioner LaSalle.
Aye.
Commissioner Dole.
Aye.
Commissioner Schlegenhoffer.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Laws.
Aye.
Vice Chair Espy.
Aye. Okay, and now we move into our presentation portions of the evening, and it is with the Oregon City NPDES MS4 Permit and Stormwater Management Plan.
Thank you. I'll give a quick introduction. This is Marcos Kubo, right? Kubo, I'm sorry. He is our stormwater manager from the Public Works Division, and he's gonna give you update on NPDES and MS4, and looking forward to hearing what those acronyms stand for.
And for those of us who really want to know, it's the Natural Pipeline Discharge Elimination System. Is that the acronym?
No.
Natural Pollution. I'm sorry.
Discharge Elimination.
Thank you.
But I'll get more into that as we go. No worries. All right, has...
Yes, can you speak up, please?
Hello? Is that good? Okay. As Koila said, I'm Marcos Kubo. I'm the Oregon City Stormwater Quality Coordinator, and this is an update on Oregon City's NPDES, or NEPTIS, MS4 Permit and Stormwater Management Plan. The permit requires to present... Requires me to present to you at least once a year to keep you updated on current events and permit changes. Okay. All right, and quick overview of the agenda. First, I'll briefly explain water quality and how it affects the city permit. Then, I'll demonstrate how we manage stormwater and permit requirements with our robust stormwater management plan and outstanding support from our community partners. So 81% of Oregon's rivers are impaired. Oregon City's biggest issues are irrigation runoff, road grime, improper pressure washing and vehicle maintenance, and the general lack of understanding of what's allowed down the storm drain. Only rain is allowed down the storm drain, in case you're wondering. Oregon City has 15 drainage basins, a steep gradient, erosive soils, flashy creeks, and urban impacts like pesticide use and excessive fertilizer. We've managed to stabilize these long-lasting conditions, but we need to continue to focus on improvement. Oregon's Department of Environmental Quality, or DEQ, issues MS4 permits to cities such as our own to ensure we are doing our part to reduce pollution discharge. MS4 stands for Separate Storm Sewer System. This has vastly reduced contamination from crossconnections thanks to our aggressive inflow and infiltration program, but that means there is no centralized... There is no centralized treatment center for stormwater. Pollution is captured at the source and stratified throughout the city. While we continue to mechanically and chemically treat our wastewater, we rely heavily on plants and soil to manage stormwater pollutants. These pollutants include heavy metals like lead and cadmium, sediment runoff, pesticides, and excess nutrients. All human contributions. The National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, MS4 Permit, contains a series of categories that provide us with a template for acceptable implementation that we can adapt to our city's unique needs. Oregon City has developed... Oops. Here we go. Oregon City developed a stormwater management plan, or SWOMP for short. That explains how the city will implement the five-year permit issued in 2021. This describes how the city will comply with these categories. The 2022 SWOMP was approved by DEQ in March of 2023, and we currently are implementing this plan. I developed this busy chart to digest and distill our stormwater responsibilities onto one page. I use this chart to help me stay on top of all the deliverables required by the permit and outlined in our SWOMP. For example, education outreach element E O 2, that small red square on the left there, represents this presentation as an annual measurable goal. Just by looking at category D, the gray column in the middle, you can tell how important erosion control is to the success of this program. Category H on the far right represents all the elements that don't fit in one of the organized categories to the left. This includes much of our water quality monitoring elements like total suspended solids and pesticides. Yes, pesticides. Pesticides have been added to the list of substances we test for now. Evidence from 2015 USGS study of Colacamis County suggests that Oregon City urbanized creeks may be exceeding EPA benchmarks, benchmark concentrations that prevent macroinvertebrates from surviving. These are little critters like mayfly and dragonfly nymphs that cycle nutrients and feed the fish. We currently have two outfalls where we are monitoring pesticides that feed into Colacamis Cove. Presently, all of our results are coming up negative. In addition to monitoring, we are also actively supporting and engaged in a local campaign through the River Starts Here to educate residents about lawn care and the harms of using pesticides improperly. Urban areas emit mercury from fossil fuel combustion, metal manufacturing, cement and caustic soda production, medical and industrial waste, and cremations. Presently, there are no identified point sources of mercury pollution in Oregon City, but we are required to sample, so we chose a location that best represents all city land uses. A great deal of effort is required to collect these samples to avoid contamination, so mercury is a regional effort coordinated by Water Environmental Services. They're sampling four times a year at one location in Oregon City, number 14. Lab analysis for both pesticides and mercury have been incorporated into our budget, and monitoring is already underway. Oregon City Public Works is actively engaging in capital improvement projects that emphasize water quality and continues to prioritize these improvements in neighborhoods that need it most. The state continues to raise the bar for stormwater regulations by requiring updates to documents and program elements that support an ever-growing need for clean water. Oregon City gladly embraces these updates for a brighter future and safer water for all. These documents undergo a thorough vetting process that ensures state approval and feasible implementation while supporting potential future needs. Last summer, we produced a green infrastructure strategy that publicly announces our methods for prioritizing green infrastructure, low-impact development like rain gardens for OC, Oregon City Stormwater Management. Monitoring changes like pesticides and mercury became effective last July and are now implemented during scheduled sampling events. We continue to make water quality and capital improvements that modify stream hydrology to mimic pre-development conditions and update the state on our progress. Our industrial commercial strategy has been updated to reflect current permit language, and we continue to screen new business licenses for best management practices as they are submitted. In addition to monitoring, we have recently produced an integrated pest management plan that considers pesticide use as a last resort. Our community partners provide a valuable resource for outreach and public involvement. The Regional Coalition for Clean Rivers and Streams and the Clean Rivers Coalition coordinate a lot of the education outreach we participate in, such as the Lawn Campaign. Greater Oregon City Watershed Council helps us coordinate with streamside landowners to lower the temperature loading with invasive plant removal and native tree planting. Colacamis County Community College and the Environmental Learning Center provides a platform for education and outreach that targets multiple demographics such as grade school, community adults, and maintainers. The Association of Clean Water Agencies provides high-value, science-based, practical service to its members through education, regulatory advocacy, and partnerships for the development of proactive solutions. Brown and Caldwell provides Oregon City with an entire agency of specialists that act as a safety net for difficult-to-interpret components of the permit and TMDL implementation plan. So, in summary, our water quality program is robust. Our community partners help us juggle all the nuances of public outreach. We continue to update our dated infrastructure for optimal performance, and we continue to seek advances in design standards that keep us ahead of permit requirements for long-lasting results. Thank you. The work I do is often behind the scenes, but I recognize that stormwater quality in Oregon City is supported by the City Planning Commission, and I thank you for making my job easier. And that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Questions from the commission? So, do we entertain a motion to... Oh, I'm sorry.
So, it's an empty room, so I'm gonna ask my dumb question for tonight. So, wastewater, or you know, that you flush down the toilet and your sink, it all goes in pipes and it's all filtered and it goes down to Wes, down, and that gets discharged in the Colacamis, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So, all the stormwater, how many discharge points does it have all along the Willamette? I'm assuming with water flowing downhill, it goes in the Willamette and the Colacamis. I don't know. I never thought about where it all went, discharged.
Yeah, I know we have at least one in the Willamette, and there are at least four, I believe, that discharge in the Colacamis, but I'm not aware of the location of all stormwater outfalls. I'm mostly aware of the ones that we monitor, specifically because they're a culmination of large areas of mixture of industrial, commercial, and urbanized areas that usually go through some type of treatment facility along the way, like a pond or rain garden, something that provides infiltration and filtration through the media.
Anyone else? Can I entertain a motion, or do we have a motion?
No, this was a presentation.
Oh, Commissioner Laws.
So, long-term, there's a lot of creeks, obviously, a little kind of bobbies of water coming down the hill. A few of them that come to mind is like Coffee Creek. We got, like, you know, obviously Singer Creek, which is bigger. We have Newell Creek. Are some of these creeks monitored to a degree or tested as well? Especially, there's some neglected creeks, you know, like where there's more sedimentation that gathers. Are we doing anything to monitor those?
Yes, we have an in-stream monitoring program that has eight locations, and the three creeks that you mentioned are all on the list. They're pretty important creeks in this, in these watersheds. And as far as the other creeks, we're invoking the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council to assist us in removing invasive species and stabilizing the banks with native species, and hopefully, that will hopefully shade the streams over time and also slow down the water through eddies and increasing the sinuosity of the streams so that it slows down and lets the sediment settle instead of continue to flush downstream.
Is there a responsibility of property owners that, you know, are along the creek who kind of like go over... Obviously, the creek is right of way, right? And if property owners cross that creek or dump in the creek, do they have responsibility towards that? Or, you know, have like debris, any type of dumping, like pine needles or other things? Are they responsible for that? Is that correct?
Yes, it's regulated under the Illicit Discharge Elimination System. That's another fun acronym, IDDE. And it kind of boils down to, if someone reports it, we can enforce our regulations, but if we don't know about it, it's hard to enforce an invisible act. But if we do see evidence of some sort of illicit discharge or dumping from a property owner, we can enforce an ordinance. I believe it's under chapter 13.47. I might be confusing that with the erosion, but in any case, we do have an ordinance that protects the city and protects the streams in case somebody does an illicit discharge. And that's part of the reason we do our in-stream monitoring is to potentially catch any discharge of that nature in process. But again, it's a lot of residents, and it's difficult to keep eyes on all of them.
And then if someone tries to claim the property or build a fence over it or do any type of treatment, like treated wood over it, is that, that shouldn't be allowed, then, with how many feet from like a creek or a water?
Yeah, we have the National Resource Overlay District that protects the stream banks. I believe at the moment, it's a 50-foot buffer, and then any kind of wetland is also protected. If there's wetland that passes that buffer, there's no construction permitted. There are a few exceptions, provided it's low-impact development and it's not basically paving over an entire wetland. And yes, no treated wood. It all has to be considered safe for the stream. So, we have regulations in place, and I know, I'm blanking on his name now. His... Is it Ted? No. Pete, yes. Pete Walter has helped me with some of the NROD issues and navigating that sort of stuff, so he's pretty well-versed on all the regulations for that, and I have every confidence in him in the planning process or any sort of permit application that he'll catch something that might be an issue. You're welcome.
Mr. Schlegenhoffer.
Yeah, I got a question. Does the city know, like, the statistics of how much stormwater gets into the sewer system? And in the last couple of years, I know we've heard a lot about smoke testing. Smoke, you know, they smoke the sewer to see if it comes out of someone's gutters. Have those efforts been able to measurably reduce the amount of stormwater in the sewer system? Is that proving effective?
Yeah, that's what the infiltration or the inflow and infiltration program is about, and that's managed by... And that's managed by Kenny Sch, it starts with an S-C-H. I believe it's just Schmidt, but I could be wrong on that. But he's up with engineering, and he does a lot of hydrologic, hydrological monitoring, modeling, excuse me, modeling. And he's been helping us with implementing the capital improvement plans as well as capturing any kind of evidence of illicit discharge or inflow infiltration that's getting into the sewer systems or vice versa.
Right, because the stormwater getting into the sewer system reduces the sewer system's capacity.
Right, and that's why we separated it.
Yeah. We used to have some backflows through people's toilets. I was just wondering if it's a small number or if it's like 30% during a big storm? Is it 5%? I mean, how much stormwater is it? Do we have a number?
I don't have a number on me right now, but I can certainly get it to you.
It'd be interesting.
It's my understanding that it's very low, that we've made vast improvements through our MS4, separating the two and further preventing any kind of reconnection.
Okay, good to know that the effort is paying off.
Yeah, we have Eric Hand and his crew to thank for that. He's really, it's a bit of a thankless job for him. He works the storm pipes and the sewer pipes, and he manages both very well.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Kind of a little piggyback, aren't all our pipes separated in Oregon City?
Yes.
Okay.
And the inflow infiltration would only find some sort of seepage, like if there was a water quality facility that was leaking into the groundwater and somehow getting into a cracked sewer pipe or vice versa, that would be what we'd be detecting because all storm and sewer is most definitely separated at this point.
Anybody else? Okay, so I know that there's no action for this, but I guess my final few cents would be, you know, would be to monitor point source stormwater pollution through the monitoring of water garden construction in individual single-family residences. I think that is a requirement for new single-family now. And then also wetland and stream quarter enhancement, as you had mentioned, through the N-Rod processes and standards. And then also future increases of stormwater facilities and their capacities to account for climate change. I know, I think we have a 15-year, 15-weather-year, stormwater year standard right now, and that probably should be looked at to increase as we get stronger and longer storms. That's all I've got. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me. And I would support any means of improving our stormwater infrastructure. I'm happy to provide any insight or evidence that might be needed. And I would argue that we need to move down to 1,000 square feet requiring LID just because we're such a small city and a lot of our dated infrastructure has problems with flooding still. One of my ideas is to start a rain barrel program where people are allowed to buy rain barrels from us for possibly a discounted price and in the same process, preventing excess water from flooding those areas that lack the infrastructure.
That'd be terrific. So, our next item is Item 3, would be the Public Commission, or Planning Commission 2024-2025 Draft Work Plan. 2024-2025, did I say that?
Yeah, I might have had a typo in there somewhere. I think in one place I did write 2023-2025, but that passed us by already. In other places, I wrote 2024 to 2025 work plan. So, I'd like to try to do a little bit of, I don't know what you call it, I'm gonna try to type into the PowerPoint at certain points while we're talking. But just to kind of start out, so this is the result of a couple of conversations that we've had over time, not too long, but a couple of meetings over different ideas that have come about and how we could kind of put those topics together in a work plan. And they kind of came into, I feel like, three different categories. But before I get there, let me back up a little bit. So, what we're gonna do tonight is review the draft work plan. Yeah, there you go. Yeah, okay. Okay, so we'll go over the draft work plan and discuss the topics. And I'd like to get a little bit, if we could, of definition around the problem statements of, you know, what problem are we trying to solve? And then prioritize the initiatives. So, I guess just to lay the groundwork a little bit, so the three categories that this broke into, and we kind of, are projects that are underway. So, some of the topics that you brought up, I think, fit into some projects that we're already working on. Education slash interdepartmental coordination. So, similar presentations like we just had from other departments and from outside organizations that could help just kind of lay the groundwork for you or help you understand certain issues that you're interested in. And then the last one is future considerations for policy direction and code amendments. And so in that, what I'm envisioning with the whole work plan, but specifically that third category, is that once the Planning Commission refines it and gets to a point where a majority of you agree on what the group should focus on, we'll bring that to the City Commission and in some cases, just kind of inform, like, you know, these are some of the topics that you're interested in. But in other cases, we'll need their direction to go do some work, if they are also interested in that. So, that's kind of the cycle. And then it would come back to this group and staff to start working on if there was something in particular that the City Commission gave direction to work on. So, I think that's a couple of things. So, that's why tonight I want to focus on identifying and clarifying the problem statement, if we can. And I guess I don't mean that we need to wordsmith things out, but as long as I can get some kind of clear direction from the Planning Commission about what you think the topic is. And then I want to make sure that we prioritize the most important topics for the whole Planning Commission to address so that it's, we're not representing an individual commissioner, but it's the body that gets represented. And that's why I'd like to get a majority vote kind of on, maybe we'll do each category, just to make sure that we're all on the same page and tracking. Okay, so with that, we will go to our next one. This one, so this first category, projects underway, doesn't really need any kind of prioritization. These are things that we're working on. So, one of the topics that I heard come up was to focus on employment land development. And the areas that were talked about were Beaver Creek Road, the Cove, and Rossman landfill. So, the Cove and Rossman landfill, I don't have a specific project for right now. But we do have a project for the Beaver Creek Road industrial area. And we recently, just last week, the City Commission approved an intergovernmental agreement with Metro. We received a grant from them to do an industrial site, industrial land readiness. And so we will be looking at the employment lands, which is a combination of just general industrial and campus industrial along Beaver Creek Road. And what we're looking for are, what are the barriers to development? And if you, I'm sorry, I don't have a map of the area, but if you can kind of picture Beaver Creek Road, you've got Clackamas Community College on one side and the high school. And then on the other side of Beaver Creek Road, you have the new apartments, Timber View. And kind of at the northern end of the area are the county's new transportation shops. And then there's this area in the middle. And so we feel like we're seeing the southern portion develop and a little bit of the northern. And so what's happening in the middle? And we want to try to figure that out and identify maybe what some of those barriers are, if there is anything that the city can do to reduce the barriers or incentivize development. And this whole project is a combined effort with economic development. And so part of what we're gonna look at is, do we need to look at marketing the properties differently? Or how do we attract certain types of employers in that area? So, and that's clearly on the economic development side. And then planning is gonna be looking more at that kind of land use. And then we'll bring in development services from Public Works to kind of inform on infrastructure. So, that, I think that will be a good project and could probably lay the groundwork a little bit for what maybe some of the other areas are that you've talked about wanting to look at. And so those could be future projects. The ultimate outcome that we expect from this project is a strategic plan that what I would like to see is a strategic plan that lays out kind of steps, right? Here's the barrier, here's what we found, here's what needs to happen to overcome that. And then the City Commission will, I'm not gonna say adopt because it doesn't go into code, but they would kind of approve the plan and accept it and say, okay, this is how we will move forward. And that could lead to, that may lead to slight refinements of code or it may lead to looking for incentives. It may lead to looking for other grants for infrastructure improvement. So, those are some of the things that will come out of that one. And then the second, the second topic in that category, I labeled it parking dependency, and that kind of came as a result of talking about climate-friendly, inequitable communities, which you'll also hear referred to as C-FEC. And so that, and we talked about that last time. No, that's a super exciting topic, and everybody wants to listen to. And so part of the discussion that came up around that topic was, okay, if the state's going to impose these rules about not allowing cities to have parking minimums, then what's the, how do we balance that? Can we get more, you know, public transit to support not having so much parking? So, that was part of the discussion that came up last time. And rather than put that transit discussion in a separate kind of category, which you could, it could live there, I think that will probably come about naturally as we start talking through some of these policies around parking that have to do with the C-FEC. And this one, we also received a grant. We're still working out the scope, but we did receive a grant from Department of Land Conservation and Development. It seemed only natural that for, if they were going to require us to do some work, that they should maybe help fund it, so they did. And so you will hear lots more about parking, as exciting as it may be. And so that, we'll probably see some discussion about transit come out of that. Okay, so.
Commissioner West had a question.
I'm sorry. You know, when we did that housing needs analysis, we had dates on it that we had to have certain, you know, steps or code, you know, some of that code developed. Do you have deadlines on this, on the parking?
Yes, December 31st of this year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that's probably a high priority.
Yeah, it is. We've, the original deadline was June of '23, and I got an extension. And then I asked for the second extension, knowing that we were gonna apply for grant funding and needed to start the work on that. There, I think they're gonna be willing to, if we need it, give us another extension to allow us to kind of work through this. But it would be kind of nice to just get it done with. So, yeah, that will be a priority. The employment land, the Beaver Creek Industrial, I think it also has a short timeframe. I think they're looking to have those grant dollars spent by the, I think, the end of this year as well. So, they'll both be moving pretty quickly. Once we get, it's always one of those things where it's like slow in the beginning, waiting for the scope and the contracts and everything to get signed. And then it's like, okay, we gotta go now because we lost all that time, so. Sure, yes. Dirk.
The industrial land readiness with the grant, is that, how much do we know about the grant? Is it enough to pay some consultants? Or is it enough for some streetlights? Or is it enough for a five-lane road?
No, it's not, it won't fund any capital kind of improvement. I appreciate where you're coming from, but no, it's enough to pay for a consultant.
I got excited.
Yeah, it's enough.
Not that kind of grant? Okay.
Not that kind of grant, no.
Okay.
But it's a good thought, good enthusiasm. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. It references here on action items, hiring a consultant to kick off the project. I would just like to make a statement that we need to use caution on hiring these consultants. I think it's important that we make sure that we can't handle that sort of assignment internally. And that there truly has to be a strong reason to spend money to hire a consultant. I mean, sometimes I get the feeling that the city is a little consultant-happy. You know, and I may be totally wrong, but it seems like we do spend an awful lot of time and money on hiring consultants.
Oh, sure, yeah, I appreciate that. And that's a couple of reasons there. One is just a staff capacity issue in being able to kind of focus on a project or manage all of the other, I was gonna say popcorn, manage all the other projects that come up or keep all of the balls juggling and not drop the glass ones. In this particular case, we're not going to look for a planning consultant. So, it's not necessarily someone that you would have seen do like the comp plan, the comprehensive plan. But we're really gonna be looking for someone who has economic development background, real estate development background. And our economic development team is pretty strong. But I'm not sure that anyone in the city really has real estate development that could also look at a market analysis. that could also look at a market analysis. So in, I do appreciate what you're saying, but I think in this case, we are going to be looking for someone very specific. The climate-friendly piece, the purpose of hiring a consultant there would be to really help refine the code language and just kind of carve out. That grant, I think, is only $35,000. It's, it's not a whole lot, so it's really for somebody who can just focus on writing policy and policy options and code language and kind of chasing down really detailed questions that we may not end up having time for. But I, I do appreciate what you're saying. Okay, and so in this section, I will be looking for, I have two questions for you. I'll kind of go through what's in here, but the questions are, I will first want to know, I'm going to tell you the questions now and then we'll kind of go through it. But I, I'd like to just know if there's a majority that are interested in the topic. And then if there's enough folks that are interested in it, then we can prioritize. Just like I said, I don't, you know, I want this to be for, for all of us. So that first topic that came up was a kind of grouped several things into infrastructure and growth. And there were quite a few questions around, does, can the growth that we're expecting be supported by our infrastructure? Is there capacity? How do we do that? How do we plan for that growth? And I think there's some, in this case, I think we can have some of our staff from Public Works come talk about some of these master plans. The sewer water and the transportation master plans. The transportation system plan is actually going to be coming up starting in 2025. I think, I think we need to have it done by the end of '26, so it's going to be kicking off fairly soon. So you'll, that's one you'll be hearing a lot about. But I think, so kind of giving a, a update of where those infrastructure plans are at, what kind of growth they have planned for, along with that transportation funding. So how do we fund new roads? How are those, how are they funded? And when there are new roads, there's not often new roads. I think from my understanding, the city's really only constructed Myers Road Connection is really the only road that they've built maybe in a long time, but that was the most recent one. Otherwise, it's typically development that's kind of improving roads. So, but that's, that's a question of how does that, how does that happen? And then there was a question that came up around the Public Works' street design standards. And that's something that Josh Wheeler's been working on fairly recently. And so I think he could come, give you an update on that and what's in there. I think the Public Works', or excuse me, the street design standards, I think the question there was kind of around, it might have been around intersection, like visibility. It might have been around, if I'm remembering right, like warrants for traffic lights and then just street lighting in general. So just, you know, the streetlights that are up and down the streets providing light. They're also decorative in nature, so they kind of add to like the urban, urban design. So that was, that's one category. The second one was parks, open space and growth. And kind of a similar question about how does our parks' master plan account for growth? How does growth incorporate open space into development? And how are the, how do we balance like residential density with open space needs? So I think again here, one of the ways we can get it that, at least creating a baseline would be to hear from our park staff about the master plan that they're in the midst of right now. Another, another option could be just a refresher on how like site plan design review is done and how open space is accounted for when we're looking at new developments. So that's the second category. And then the last one is housing. And a lot of questions about housing, housing affordability. And in that, in that category, we could spend a lot of time on housing and housing affordability and affordable housing. And so I'm going to take just a minute. I, I would like to just make a clarification that when we talk about, there's a difference between talking about housing affordability and affordable housing. And usually affordable housing is like capital A affordable, capital H housing, and it's publicly subsidized or it's coming, or a nonprofit is running it. There's restrictions on income. There's restrictions on how much you can sell it for versus housing affordability, which is what can the median, you know, household, what's the word, like for wage? The median household income, what can, what kind of house, housing price can that support? So those are kind of different conversations that I think they get lumped, lumped together. But it could be useful to kind of break them out a little bit. We did, we did address that a bit in the housing needs analysis. We addressed the housing affordability piece, not really tools to get affordable housing. So in that, in that section, I would offer looking for someone maybe from a nonprofit housing group or the county housing office who could just kind of come talk about some of the tool, either tools that are out there or even the differences in those two ideas right there. Yeah, and I'm, I'm going to stop there for a minute.
So, you know, we're talking about affordable housing. You know, I've seen through some infill coming in. It's not necessarily obviously the most aesthetically pleasing look of some of these houses being built next to historic homes. Is there any look, like, because obviously part of the commission's discussions are about beautification. And we're talking about us being a historic town, and we want to preserve that in some fashion. Are we talking about possibly considering any of these housing, even affordable or not? Having some type of look? Because I mean, if you look historically in the neighborhoods, Malala Avenue, Elyville was its own little historic town, so was Mount Pleasant. It would be nice, because we see all this infill coming in on the busier roads, to at least have the park facing the road look somewhat, look like a pioneer front of some sort or match some of the housing that's still historically there to where it looks more aesthetically pleasing. I mean, the thing we're looking at long-term, obviously, we were discussing infill, right? And we're discussing possibly having more commercial on the bottom as to something in the future so that, you know, there's more walking distance businesses so that we don't get in our cars as much. Wouldn't it be nice, like, you see in Soweth, this infill that they've done, but the problem is, is it doesn't match the historic homes. Wouldn't it be nice to look at something that at least aesthetically looks like some of the homes that what we represent here in Oregon City?
So that sounds like a new topic to me altogether of design standards that.
Just in the historic parts, because that's really kind of what we were, you know, before. Because if we really get a bunch of infill in, a lot of it hasn't really looked like Oregon City at all.
Well, and so that topic, I think Christina would be a really good resource to talk about that because there are some design standards in the McLaughlin Conservation District, but it's not, it's not a historic preservation district the same way that Kenema is. So there are some design standards in that area. So if, if that's a topic that, that you're interested in, I could ask Christina to kind of come talk about that.
I mean, you don't want to create limits either. Obviously, you don't want to make affordable housing difficult. So you'd want a balance between that, you know what I mean? Because you can't obviously do that everywhere, but there's just some type of balance. Because I mean, some of the building that's happening right next to the historic homes, you know, I mean, some of it, they're really trying, like, obviously on a historic lot, I've seen it to where recently, for instance, they're really kind of matching historic houses. They're trying to. And that's really cool that they're trying to do that. But it'd be nice to have it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing, especially when it's right next to a historic home.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to answer any other questions. I guess I would like to know if the group, if the planning commission is interested in, in these three. And I don't know if you want to take it one by one and just kind of gauge the interest or?
You mean for each, for each category that you've listed here?
Right, exactly, yeah. So for, so my question is, in the infrastructure and growth category, is there a majority of you that would like to receive some more information via, you know, presentations to the planning commission about that?
Yeah, I think that would be fine. I think we can go category by category. You're probably averse to adding new categories, maybe ones that I heard from the city commission at their last meeting in terms of their master plans that they were interested in relooking at to make sure that they were a little bit more sound and appeal-proof.
Oh, you're talking, yeah, you're talking about concept, some of the concept plans?
Yeah, and then the concept plans, South End, Beaver Creek, too late for.
Well, I, I guess I would like to keep some parameters around the work plan, but that is work that is underway.
Okay.
It's, and to my point earlier, it's based on when we have capacity. We're trying to kind of plug away at working on code, what could be clear and objective code that will eventually make its way to you and city commission, so.
Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure you're aware, yeah.
Well, I have a question about if we're going to be discussing infrastructure, aren't those requirements already established by code? Would we be talking about changing codes, like, like curb cuts and widths of streets and that sort of thing? Was that would be, would we be discussing those things or?
I think those are questions that you could ask, but not necessarily, I mean, if, if you wanted to make a suggestion, you could. But the, these master plans are not necessarily going through revisions right now? As far as I, no, I could be wrong about that. It feels like master plans are always kind of going through a revision. But the idea really is to give you a baseline of knowledge of what's in the master plan and what level of growth is planned for in that master plan. And it's really, I think the idea here for you as a policymaking group is to be a little bit more high-level than, and super-specific of, of what it results in on the ground, but more of what you're trying to achieve.
So on that being, I was wondering then if it would make sense for these, some of these master plans to be discussed and maybe funneled into the bottom loading of increased density from statewide housing production requirements and then developing.
Can you say that last part again? I didn't catch it.
So in other words, we have all this new density that's being bottom loaded. We have regular density that's coming in, you know, just from the normal population influx to Oregon City. But then we're going to be bottom loaded with increased density from all of the new housing production requirements that the state is, may be mandated by the state.
Okay.
So that's going to result in additional density. Of course, you know, when you have like four, you know, when you have single-family lot that allows for four units, that's going to increase density, increase burdens on, on infrastructure and all that kind of stuff. So I'm just wondering if there is discussion that centers around that concept.
Yeah, and I, I think that was the, the whole point of, of talking about these master plans of how. And that, that could be what we ask our presenters to really focus on is, how does middle housing fit into these infrastructure plans?
In my opinion, that's our problem statement, really.
Right, yeah, yeah, okay.
But we can talk about that too if you want. But I mean, I, I, I think that's really the issue is the, the increased density from all the housing requirements from the state.
Mm-hmm.
Present and anticipated, of course.
I like all these topics, so.
Yeah, sure.
I have some further clarifications I'd like to discuss. One of my questions I wrote down was, why use the phrase affordable housing if it can't be defined? But it sounds to me from your earlier statements that you may have given some definitions to affordable housing. I'd like to see those.
Yeah, so are you asking, I mean, if that's something you want to see, we could bring that back as part of that presentation. If you're asking to see that tonight, it'll take me a minute to dig it up, but.
No, not tonight, no.
But if, if we were to have that discussion, you'd want to have, have those definitions? Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, and then my next one was, there's a statement, and I'll read it. It says, incentivized retaining existing housing to maintain naturally occurring affordable housing. Well, how is naturally occurring affordable housing? How does that come about when housing prices continue to rise? How does, how does naturally occurring affordable housing occur?
Right.
So manufactured home parks or other types of existing affordable housing that may not see as much of an increase as you would through new stick-built development? Does that make sense?
But, 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 not that particular statement because manufactured housing, I don't think, well, I guess it should be allowed in the city, yeah, I guess.
Well, I'm just talking about naturally occurring meaning previously, I'm making that synonymous to previously existing. You know, affordable housing opportunities that are already there. You know, cheaper, cheaper apartment units, trailer parks, manufactured homes, those kinds of things that people already live in are probably already naturally, naturally occurring affordable housing. Commissioner West?
I thought I remember Ms. Richter bringing this up. And she was talking about, this is the context, I thought, not tearing down a house. So now you can build four houses on a, a lot. So I think she was referring to keeping their, you know, incentivizing people to keep the existing house and then adding ADUs or whatever, all the other ones. That's what I thought she was, but I mean.
Yeah, I, I, I think that you're, you're correct in that, I think that's what.
Where that came from, I think.
I think that's what, what Ms. Richter was referring to. And just the idea of an existing house not costing as much as a new build house. And so is there ways to maintain that existing home? And for example, the, the, through the middle housing code, we kind of already did that in a way where we said that you could have a detached duplex if the original home was still there. And so that was a way to maintain that house and not do a complete, you know, tear down of everything and then build up brand-new homes that would have the cost of a, of a brand-new home. So that, that's kind of what.
So that would make sense when it says here, retaining existing housing.
Right.
Would refer to then you, you keep the existing housing rather than tear down and start over.
Right, yeah, yeah.
That makes more sense to me.
Yeah.
I think. Thank you.
Makes sense to me, of course, that's.
Oh, and when we get to exploring tools to support affordable housing.
Yeah.
I would encourage you. I would encourage that we get some builders in here to talk to us.
Mm-hmm.
What their ideas are to reduce their cost of building.
Yeah, that's a great idea. We have a meeting that happens every other month at, in the morning, 7:30 a.m., with, it's called the Developer Stakeholder Group. And there are builders in that group, and we asked that question last time around. And there's a long list of things that add to their cost. And what we heard is there's not a whole, there's not a whole lot on that list that a city can control, but they, there are a lot of costs involved. So that seems like a reasonable piece of that discussion, you know?
I bet you there are, I bet you there are more things that the city can control than you think there are.
Yeah.
With a little thought given to it, I bet you.
Mr. Stahl.
The green light. I had to use the green light because nobody uses the green light. The only...
I just watch for, I try to watch.
Yeah.
I try to watch for the...
But here, I'm watching the wrong one.
Yeah, okay. The only, the only thing I can bring up about incentivizing retaining existing housing is, we don't have any, we don't have any control over what they rent that housing out for after we grant the building permits, the, you know, the, yeah, there's no reason, so we let them, we let them keep the junky duplex. We don't force them to tear it down. So now they can put in a couple, you know, ADUs, whatever, a duplex. But there's, they have, there's no condition of approval that requires them to rent those units out cheaply. So we're helping the property owner, really. We're not guaranteeing affordable housing. That's the way I see it.
And I think the way to get at that is not through conditions or codes, but actually identifying what that incentive would be.
We've talked about incentives before. I don't know if we ever come up with any good ones.
And that would be where we'd want to bring in some outside expertise.
It'd be interesting if anyone's been able to come up with something that works.
Yeah, it would be. And I think if we, we could look to other cities and what kind of carrots they offer. Because I think, I'm going to mix metaphors, but if we could offer more honey, you know, maybe we'd get more...
In exchange for five years of reduced rent or something? I just don't know how we'd police that. What if they don't?
Right.
What if they rent it out for more? Are we going to follow them and keep track of how much they're charging for rent? And then we turn into a rent police?
Well, and that, I think, is what the point of a housing office does. So in a larger city, if there's a, you know, a department that focuses on housing, they have the capacity to do some of those things, to track that.
Would that be on a county level?
Yeah, I, well, I think technically, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So maybe we could tap into a different agency to, because like, taxes are county? So maybe we tap into a county agency that nobody's bringing up right now, but could possibly use?
Well, yeah, and I think that would be the point of this discussion, is that's, those are some of the folks that I would want to reach out to and see if they could come talk to us and give us ideas.
Yeah, I know that's always been the big one. How do we, how do we actually, you know, guarantee lower rents?
Right.
And we haven't been able to do that. We've talked about it a lot, but definitely something to talk more about. Thank you.
To piggyback on you, to that thought, there are places in Oregon City, you know, where they built many townhomes intending to sell each one of them, and then half of them were bought by a large leasing firm to sell them at a higher cost of rent. And how to, a way to at least, I mean, obviously, there's freedom in what people buy, but somehow to make it to where it's more affordable, or promoting people to own their homes rather than, and having it more affordable than a leasing firm to buy it and then mark up the rent. I mean, and then the hard thing is, is, you know, I know one particular area in Codfield neighborhood where, I mean, it's really impacted the neighbors there in a negative way. And, you know, it's been hard on the rent there. People don't stay there long. It's a big turnover. I mean, it's great if you're, I think I rented there for a while when I was turning over to getting a house, you know? But it's hard on the people there who live there for long term. So it'd be nice to get people to invest in us longer and stay here, because that helps Oregon City, too.
Right, so I think at this point, the two things, the two solutions that you had for housing, you know, the presentation of housing of nonprofit and Clackamas County Housing Authority, it'd be interesting to know more about that, to see if they actually have the capacity to be able to do the things that we're talking about tonight. And then the other thing would be also hear from city staff about middle housing and lot, you know, and where we're at on that, where we're going, that kind of thing, to see, you know, just what else we need to do.
Okay, so I'm hearing a lot about housing. I think I heard some interest in the infrastructure. So if, I guess if I could just get head nods, does everybody want to get some, we'll call it some education or presentations around infrastructure? Okay, and, okay, I was going to try to write, but I'm just going to use my pen, and then I'll keep track of notes that way. All right, so there's, there's some interest there. Parks, open space and growth, is that, is there interest in learning more about that? I don't know if I'm seeing as much.
I would definitely, I think there's value in hearing the results or where they're at on the Parks Master Plan, what that's really looking at, consensus or, you know, the recommendations from it, at least from an information standpoint.
Okay.
The concern I have with it is we see new development that require to build a new park, and the Parks Department's already burdened and, you know, underfunded. And so there's continually funding SDC fees for new park, and then the older parks are neglected. So there's a burden of responsibility. So it'd be, it'd be nice to hear innovation and what we could do to support not only new parks but old parks that be able to, because obviously, as we have more infill, there's going to be more burden on our parks.
What I don't know about the Parks budget is, did it have funds strictly allocated for new parks and then maintenance funds, or is it more flexible? Maybe Parks could talk about that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so that, I, yeah, so I've got at least three folks who are interested, yeah? How many do I need tonight, Paul?
I think we need four out of the seven, right?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're okay with that.
Is there, was there four people? Okay.
Including?
All right, okay.
Okay.
Okay, excellent. And then I think I heard enough questions about housing to warrant that there's interest in housing. Okay, all right, so if I am to set up some priority for who, which of these topics you hear about first, I guess let me just say that since Parks is in the middle of their master plan right now, they probably will need to come to you anyway, because we're going to have to update the, it will have to get adopted into the comp plan, right? And so it's going to have to come to you through a comp plan amendment. So I don't know when that, exactly that's going to happen. It would be nice for them to come ahead of that and maybe give you some information before they have to go through a public hearing, so I can talk to them about that piece. So I guess with that caveat, are, is there, one of these that you want to start with? Should I take a guess that it's housing?
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So I think, why don't I, why don't I put some focus on housing? And then, rather than saying like, what's second and third with these other two, maybe it's more dependent on scheduling and just when people can get here and what the Parks process is like.
I think that makes a lot of sense. I don't, I don't want to have Parks folks come in and have to talk about something that they haven't been able to or have, have the opportunity to prepare for.
Right.
I think it's a lot more efficient, you know, to let us know when they think they are ready to present, you know, the framework of what they're, what they're contemplating for their plan.
Okay, okay, that, that works, that's great. Okay, and...
Collette, do you know the timeframe on that? About when they, when the master plan would be done for Parks?
I don't. I, I kind of thought that they were aiming for this spring, but I don't, I don't know for sure.
No worries.
So, yeah, but that's, I'll check in with that, but I think it's, I'm going to say Okay, this next one is more challenging of, of the three categories. So this one will definitely need direction from city commission, if, if any of these options are to be pursued. So I'll, I'll go through them a little bit. So, and actually, I think you've already talked about the recreational RV parks when we talked about the Clackamas Park, RV Park. So just a refresher, but that idea was to take a look at any other zones or areas in the city that might support a recreational RV park, being very distinctive from a mobile home park or a park where somebody could park their RV and live. This would be, you know, max 14 days, 10 days, something like that. So that, that is, that was a topic that came up when we were talking about Clackamas Park. The next one, short-term rentals. So this topic came up, I was having a discussion with Chair Stoll, and he had some concerns with the limits around the short-term rentals. And right now, it's, excuse me, it's pretty restrictive. You need, basically, you'd have to get a conditional use permit if you're going to have like an Airbnb-type thing or any other short-term rental in your home, in a residential area. You know, hotels, bed and breakfast, that kind of thing, they are allowed in some districts. And in certain districts, you have to get a conditional use permit. And they, there really isn't a distinction between a, you know, an Airbnb for, this is, I know that's a brand name, but there isn't a distinction from that type of a short-term rental and like a hotel, really. They're both, I don't know if a hotel needs a conditional use permit in a residential area, but the short-term rental does. So that becomes prohibitive. And the idea was that, and I'm not trying to advocate for this, I'm just trying to kind of put some context around it, but the idea is that it can be helpful to folks who may need extra income to, and help them stay in their home if they're able to rent out a room or two or something like that. I can tell you from personal experience, my mother-in-law lives in Boulder, Colorado, which is not the most permissive place. There's a lot of restrictions, and she uses Airbnb to supplement her income as she's, you know, basically retired at this point. So I think that was the idea that Commissioner Stoll had, is that they're, not everyone's going to use it that way, but some people might. And so that's where that idea came from. Okay, and then the, the last one, the Seventh Street Mulhalla corridor. So that has several pieces to it. One of them was increasing and attracting activity. One of them was commercial uses on ground floor and kind of requiring, or maybe it's incentivizing commercial uses on the ground floor and having residential above. And then the last piece was a view corridor protection. And in that one in particular, it might be useful to kind of split up the, the problem statement into two, into two different topics, where we're talking about maybe pedestrian and vehicle safety, which would really have much more of a kind of transportation engineering focus versus the view corridor. And really, there's probably a third statement in there versus just the urban fabric that could be created along Mulhalla if, if ground-floor retail was allowed. So I think all of those kind of have different, different ways that, to get at them. So I'm going to stop there, and we can talk about them, answer questions, wherever you'd like to go.
Well, I'd like to start with putting the priority on the Seventh Street Mulhalla subject, because I think we could get our biggest bang for the buck addressing that for first of these three categories. And then I would put second as short-term rentals and third, recreational RV parks.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, I'm going to go with that.
Okay. Well, thank you, Commissioner LaSalle, for...
That was easier than I thought.
It was.
Thank you.
Are we allowed to add any, anything to the categories? Like if we wanted to talk about maybe some design standards for Seventh Street Mulhalla, adding more articulation?
Oh, sure, so...
Adding additional windows, that kind of thing? Upping the percentage of...
Yeah.
...bottom-floor windows?
Okay.
Lighting?
So look at design standards?
Lighting standards, yeah, design standards. Is that possible?
It's your work plan. So you should ask your colleagues.
Yeah, I'm sort of throwing that out there to everybody. I didn't want to upset the apple cart, but...
You are the boss tonight, buddy.
I guess I am. Takes some getting used to.
I thought, I don't know how many years ago, that they just did the Seventh Street corridor?
Yeah.
And updated it, and that's why there's street trees, streetlights, you know, old-fashioned lights versus new lights, so.
Mm-hmm. Um, I...
That plan, I thought that has been done.
Okay, you could, you're probably correct. I don't, I don't know that.
Yeah, that'll be before you.
And it looks great, but yeah, I think the individual building standards and then signage?
Mm.
You know, I, I keep going to that, that vape shop over there, and I don't mean to call out anybody in specific, but I think that there are some signs that are too big, some lights that are too bright. I don't have a problem with, you know, whatever business people want to do, but I think it ought to follow in the same kind of cohesive, cohesive design standard and sympathy to, you know, architectural detailing and things like that, instead of just this sort of rampant 82nd Avenue sort of look.
So I guess on that one...
I know.
I guess, I'm not sure if we, if, if you'd like me to, I could bring this back and we could just talk about that.
Yeah.
Because I think we could have like multiple things to talk about on, on that...
Oh, yeah.
Seventh Street corridor. And it might be helpful for me to chase down this, the corridor plan and start with that, about what was in that plan, what happened and what didn't happen.
What's interesting about it is technically, historically, you look at Seventh Street concept compared to Elyville. And Elyville was more rambunctious historically. It was the section of town where they did more gambling, there was, you know, more, a little bit more unruly, I've been told. Hood Street was the center of it. So really, historically, Elyville, Hood Street was the center of it. And then there was the original Ely store across from Hood Street. And supposedly, it was an A-frame. I'm trying to get a picture of it. Chris Wadsworth, they have one. And George Ely lived on the top of the store, and it was an A-frame. And he... And he used to sleep on the top of the A-frame. So it'd be kind of cool to like, kind of restore some of that because right in front of Hood Street, there's an area where you can totally have a beautiful sign or some type of, you know, there's a lot of beautification that could happen on Mulhalla Avenue in that section. What's cool about it, it would really tie in historic Seventh Street and the beautification would tie up to Hilltop.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So I do support, uh, mixed use, commercial uses on the ground floor and single family on top, that sort of lift work type of format that's really popular.
Yeah. And so just today I, um, learned more about the vertical, it has a couple of names, vertical housing tax credit, basically. I think it's also called like a vertical design housing zone or something like that. And, um, so it's, it, rather than, um, kind of a forceful approach or like a stick approach, the incentive or the carrot would be if you, if the developer, um, provides, you know, a certain percentage of ground floor retail with a certain number of units on top, um, then they get certain tax breaks. And we have a vertical housing tax credit district that I think is already around the cove.
Yeah.
So part of, part of that would be, um, uh, looking at expanding that vertical, that vertical housing tax district. Um, I did see, I did a super short research on it and I did see that City of Beaverton I think does include some requirements for affordability.
Yeah.
When, like, if you're gonna receive this, then you have to have some units that are, um, a certain, you know, affordable range. So that could be another tool to.
Yeah. Yeah. And I know that the parking requirements are kind of mecurical right now, but, but in my experience, when, a long time ago, when I look back on looking at, you know, CUPs for commercial development on Mulhalla Avenue and things like that, was that we ran into the problem of not having enough parking because what the, the lots, the zoning did not go deep enough in the lots to afford for the parking that people wanted to have for the development they wanted to do. So in other words, so if they wanted to do like a, an office building or something like that, they needed more parking, but they're, but it wasn't appropriately zoned and then they had to go through the awkward process of having a zone change done to properties that are adjacent or, or to the rear to accommodate for the required parking for that proposed use. So that, I, I don't know if that's a real thing right now, but that was something that we ran into when we worked in, on, on Mulhalla Avenue and, and economic development stuff back, way back.
Okay.
Way back when.
Okay. Good to know. Okay. All right. So, um, okay. Well, that was easier than I thought. Uh, so the next steps, basically, I, I will refine this. Let me, let me just repeat what I heard to make sure that, um, I'm on track with everything. So, um, we went through the projects that are already underway. And then in the education, interdepartmental coordination category, there was interest in all of them. I'll reach out to housing folks, um, nonprofits and county staff, and then I'll reach out to our, our internal departments and just look at their schedules and see when is a good time to bring some of these, um, items back. And then in terms of the future considerations for policy direction and code amendment, um, since the priority Seventh Street Mulhalla, I think what I would like to do there is, look for that corridor plan that, that you were talking about and probably just talk with staff and, uh, see how we can kind of break this up. Because I, I feel like I've heard multiple, multiple pieces. There's the pedestrian and vehicle safety, um, design standards, which could include signage standards. Um, I, I'm just gonna be upfront that I'm really afraid of touching sign code because it's like, there's, there's a lot of legalities and constitutionalities and I
Oh, yeah.
I don't necessarily want to open it up, but
That could take on a life.
We can talk about it.
I agree.
We can talk about it. Okay. So we'll bring, what, I think what we'll bring back are some, maybe try to flesh out those different topics and how we can, because I don't think we can do all of that together. I think we're gonna have to maybe pick pieces of it. So I'll, um, I'll talk with staff, we'll put our heads together.
If, if it's any help, we've been doing incremental little tweaks to our sign code to allow a few things.
It's, it's, it's still, it still scares me.
Not allow some others, maybe reduce the size a little bit, you know, that kind of stuff, but.
Maybe we can do that. Um, okay. That's so great. Thank you. So I will bring, we'll, we'll bring back a, a work plan and, um, bring back a plan to dig into this topic.
Okay. Are there any other communications or?
Mr. O'Z, yes. I got something.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'm just reminiscing a little bit about our previous Mulhalla's, uh, streetscape, uh, process, the one that goes from, uh, 213 to Beaver Creek Road. How long did that process take, uh, to go from planning to funding? Was that, I, I was involved in part of that, kind of when we were picking out what kind of rusty art we were gonna put at the beginning of it. But I, I don't remember, was it, was it years? Was it a decade? And then when it came to funding, was, was there a lot of money, grants? Was, how much came from who?
Um, I don't, I don't know a lot of answers to that question. Um, I think that our city engineer Dana Webb did secure grants for some of the capital improvements. Um, so the little bit I know about that process, it would have been a couple of years. There would have been some probably, I'm guessing, grants for design, grants for construction, and then, um, so grants for design, grants for like the construction documents, right? Getting that ready. And then the grant to actually make the capital improvement itself. So, and that's something that I could ask her to come and talk to us about just so we have a, a sense of, of, uh, duration and scope. Um, and then there was another piece that you had asked about, about that. But I, so I'm gonna say that those kind of projects typically take a couple of years at best.
Yeah. Yeah. I remember that, um, I, I feel like every part of, I know there's almost a, there's almost a plan for basically every major road in Oregon City. We have some kind of a plan already. And when we were involved in, in the Mulhalla Avenue, we were given some options, but a lot of it had already been, you know, the, the street design had been kind of finalized already, the easements were there. Um, and then there was feasibility. We're trying to figure out how much of the water power can go underground and we figured out a lot of it can't. It just doesn't make any sense. We can't become New York City. So, uh, but it'd be interesting for the project we were just discussing going further down Mulhalla Avenue. You know, if, if we can come up some, with some cool ideas that maybe in the future that, you know, if, if that project ever becomes something, that some of our ideas can, you know, help shape that corridor and, you know, we're part of that process.
Yeah. I, I was just trying to think where some of that might fit in. And it may be that some of your discussions, um, flow into the transportation system plan update. It may be that some of them, some of your discussions create an entirely new, um, corridor or rather than a new corridor, it could be updates to the mixed-use corridor that's the zoning that's already out there. If we're thinking about incentives, then that, incentives don't always live in the land use code. The land use code is more of a stick. So that, that may lead to, you know, economic development programs. So it's just, yeah. That may be where some of this ends up.
All right. Yeah. Because I know some bicycle lanes were part of that, uh, bicycle and pedestrian safety. So I was wondering if there was already some kind of a bicycle, some preliminary plans for that corridor as far as bike lanes, sidewalks, is?
There probably is in the, in the TSP, the existing TSP. And so when you see like new developments coming along and if it, if the street isn't already built out to its full, um, design build out, then the new development would be responsible for sections of that. And the, the developments that I can think of that I've seen on Mulhalla, I'm not sure that they're, I'm not sure that they're implementing public improvements, but I could be wrong about that.
Okay. Would it be possible to get the plans that exist for the, for Mulhalla Avenue from, uh, would it be Josh Wheeler?
Well, um, I mean, it would be Dana Webb or city engineer. I mean, she, she was the one that led that Mulh- the Mulhalla Capital Project. So I could ask her to come talk about how they did that. Um, that's probably on our website somewhere.
Already.
What's that?
Commissioner West, did you have something? Oh, I'm sorry.
We should discuss it.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead. I think I'm about done with that. I mean, drug it through the dirt. It's, it's no longer breathing.
Just to verify, there hasn't been any public improvements from what I've seen above on 10th.
On 10th.
Or, on, uh, well, going up from, it goes from Seventh up to, uh, uh, Mulhalla, excuse me.
Well, I'm the only one here with a real announcement and we talk so much about, uh, I'm, I'm joking. Um, and, um, we talk so much about affordable housing, but tomorrow night at the Pioneer Community Center at 6:30. I mean, nobody's gonna be probably watching this at, uh, nine o'clock tonight and knowing it for tomorrow, so the edification is for your good, I guess. But, um, it's the co- uh, conversation on the Homeless Solutions Coalition. I don't know if you've heard about these people. They have bought the Miles Fiberglass Building. There, the county has money in it. So if you have any questions, you want to hear the updates, uh, where they're at with this process, uh, it's at the Pioneer Community Center at 6:30 tomorrow night.
Where is that?
615 Fifth Street.
It's right behind the library.
Huh?
Right behind the library.
Yeah, behind the library. But, um, I'm going. This should be very interesting.
Yeah.
I, I don't know what the latest updates are, so. It's a big topic. Thank you.
Commissioner LaSalle?
Um, I'd just like to let my fellow commissioners know that I had an excused absence the last meeting because I had heart surgery that day and I couldn't even attend by Zoom. Now, if I had been remotely, anywhere, I would have attended by Zoom.
Well, why the hell not?
Well, you know, they had me on these funny little pills and stuff that made me kind of goofy. I'm goofy anyway, but that was even worse.
Wow.
Thank you.
Glad you made it out the other side. I'm glad you're okay. Yeah.
Um, I guess the only other thing is right now I do not have any items on the agenda for March 11th. Um, we do have a number of items for the second meeting in March, so March 26th.
You do? For the second meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't make any spring break plans.
Okay. Good. Good for you. Yeah.
I was joking. I, I, I mean, second, I mean, don't think I, I'm joking.
Oh, come on.
The money stopped.
I don't take, I don't take anybody serious.
Okay.
Not even me.
Okay. Well, uh, I like the, uh, idea of, uh, honing in on, so, windows, like things like that, off of design standards.
Yeah.
Good.